Yeah, that's all right. What's the date today, May nineteenth?
May nineteenth.
Nineteenth, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is anyone other than the town of Winchandon recording tonight? No? Okay, great. We're open for public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Seeing none or hearing none, then we will move on to number five, which is welcome to our newest member of the school committee, Alicia Jordan. Welcome, Alicia.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. I was just finishing up baccalaureate at the Winchandon School, and I just presented the two awards I was responsible for, so my apologies for being late.
That's okay. Stuff happens. Life happens, and we just want to welcome you to our board, and we wish you much success. I know that you'll be a great contributor, and we're happy to have you. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the next two years.
Okay. Did you want to give, for people that are watching on TV, a little bit of your background? Just to familiarize people with you?
Sure. So I've been in education for about twenty years. I was a public school teacher in northern New York for ten, moved to the Winchandon School to pursue something a little bit different and to challenge myself beyond where I had grown up, went to high school and college. And so the Winchandon School was that opportunity, and I've been there the last ten years as a full-time teacher, and I have progressed through the administrative ranks up to assistant head. And I decided to run for a school committee because I invest in communities, and I wanted to bring my knowledge, expertise, and whatever I could to the town of Winchandon, because it's given me a great deal over the last ten years, so I wanted to give back.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
We're looking forward to it. Ryan is missing tonight. Ryan is in New York on business, so we wish him well with that, and we hope to see him soon. First thing on our agenda is the reorganization of the committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Given Ryan's absence, I'd make a motion at this point that we table this until our next meeting and hope that we have a full board available to do the reorganization.
Okay.
And we did the same thing last year in the absence of somebody. I don't know who it was, but I think it would behoove us to wait at least one more week to go ahead with this.
I second.
Okay, we have a second. Any more further discussion about tabling the reorganization until our next meeting? Hearing none, then we'll take a roll call vote. And guess who gets to be first, Alicia?
Yes.
Okay, aye. Go ahead.
Aye.
All right. Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we will table this one for our next meeting. All right. Now, we have another new face for our school committee meeting. Mr. King, do you want to do the honors?
I do, thank you. So we have a new student representative this evening, Tiana Grassley. Tiana is here tonight. She is our student council secretary. She is our NHS parliamentarian. She is the junior class secretary. And she is currently the girl, on the varsity girls softball team as the second baseman and all-around utility infielder.
All right.
Thank you for, Tiana, coming tonight to give us our student update.
Welcome, Tiana. I noticed I was at the awards banquet.
Oh, yes.
You must have had to back up a truck to bring home all the awards you've got. You've got a ton of awards.
That I expected.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. King, for the very nice introduction. Last Tuesday, the annual scholars dinner was held at the high school. The staffsters' dinner to the students. Our guest speaker was Murdoch alumnus Cody Goodwin, class of two thousand and ten, who now works as a human resource director for Disney Plus in New York City. The awards program followed Mr. Goodwin's speech. A Murdoch scholar is one who achieves a three-point-oh or higher average for the first three quarters of the academic year. Sixty-seven students qualified for the honor this year. Fifty-eight students were recognized by individual departments. Nine juniors received book awards from seven different colleges. In total, ninety-seven different students were recognized for their academic efforts. Yesterday, three of the seniors presented to DESI and the Mass Higher Workforce Board about their participation in the High School Seniors in Education Program with Ms. Rondo. Murdoch is one of the eight schools in central Mass to participate in the program and one of six schools to do so for two years. Currently, sixteen seniors are a part of HSSIEP with placements at Memorial, Toy Town, Murdoch Middle, and Central Office. Today, twenty-five students attended a field trip with Ms. Elias to the Mass Museum of Contemporary Art in North Adams. Also today, sixteen students attended the Vex Robotics Competition at Oakmont Regional High School with Mr. Collins. The DevilBots teams placed sixth and ninth overall out of thirty-one teams after the initial competition. They were both eliminated after the first round of the semifinals. A district-wide pep rally was also held today at Murdoch for tomorrow's Special Olympics School Day Games. Athletes from all four schools were recognized for the competition tomorrow, which will take place at Alumni Field from ten to one. NHS and SUGO will buddy with athletes tomorrow to compete in several stations. They will have lunch on the field at noon, followed by an award ceremony at twelve-thirty. On Saturday, May twenty-first, the freshman class will host a bottle-and-can drive from nine to twelve at Murdoch High School. And next week, May twenty-sixth, Mr. Grassley's sports management class will visit Gillette Stadium for a day of programming. Senior events will take place as follows. May twenty-seventh will be the field trip to Boston. May thirty-first will be the mock crash with a rain date of June first. May thirty-first is also the junior and senior powder puff game at six-thirty PM at the Alumni Field. May thirty-first and June first are seniors' exams, final assessments, and rehearsals. June second is class day at eleven-thirty AM. June third is promenade at six PM at Murdoch, and prom will immediately follow at Hidden Hills. June fourth is grad celebration from six PM to ten PM at Murdoch High School. June fifth, and June fifth is graduation, two PM at Murdoch High School. Also with sports, girls varsity softball will play its last regular season game away at Tejano on Monday, May twenty-third. Boys varsity baseball will play away also at Tejano on Monday, home versus Bromfield on Tuesday, and home versus Maynard on Wednesday. And middle school track has a meet at Overlook Middle School on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. And that is all I have.
That was, that was quite a bit, Tiana. Thank you so much. What is the grad celebration, June fourth, six to ten? What is that?
They have a party.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Rondo, Murdoch High School. The grad party was something we started last year in lieu of the alumni banquet, and we did not have prom last year. So we applied, Officer Flag and I, applied for and received a grant from the district attorney's office last year, and we also received it this year for thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to pay for alternate programming. And the idea is to keep kids in a safe environment so that they're not out making bad decisions. So what we are doing this year with the help of some grant money from the Murdoch Trust is we have a couple of food trucks coming. We do lawn games, tie dye, different activities for the kids. And then we'll have an outside drive-in movie following dinner and all that. And then the kids, we will have door prizes and things like that for the kids, you know, stay till the end, and then, and then they will go home at about ten, ten-thirty.
Okay, so it's similar to the old lock-ins they used to do.
Yeah, except we're outside.
Yeah. You're locked out instead of in.
Yeah, you're locked out.
Okay. All right. Well, that sounds like a fun night.
It should be.
I can, I can say that the seniors last year had a blast.
Yes.
There were a lot of great pictures from that. Are the pictures still available somewhere?
I'm sure they're floating around on the interwebs. I believe there was, I believe there was an album posted on social media last year.
Yeah, I think there is. I'll have to see if I can find it.
Terrific. Other questions from committee members? For Tiana or for Ms. Rondo?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your report.
Thanks, Tiana.
Well done. Okay, consent agenda. We don't have one tonight. So we're down to number nine, superintendent's report, the COVID update, always a favorite, and, and then I guess graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, sorry to bring the COVID update back, but I think it's necessary, although it's not as bad this evening as anticipated. So just our local numbers within the district, and these are all only positive numbers, just a reminder that we no longer do the test-to-stay program. The state sort of did away with that when we did away with masks. It's really difficult to do contact tracing, which the test-to-stay program relied upon. So without the masking, we really can't do the test-to-stay and define close contacts the way that we would have in the past. So with that, these are all positive cases. So there is one positive case at Memorial Elementary. Happy to report that there are zero cases at Toy Town. Four positive cases at Murdoch Middle School and two at the high school. And then across the district, there are nine staff members currently positive. So that's our current state, and I know I don't, I didn't actually get to the current numbers tonight to see if they're posted on the state website, but as you are all aware, I'm pretty sure, we've been on a constant rise, and last week we were up over eight percent positive test rate, I believe, in the town. So I think we were as low as around three percent, and then we've begun to creep back up. So we have reiterated to our nursing staff, most specifically in families that's still posted on our website, what our last policies and procedures were. So if you'll recall, that back in February, March timeframe, we sort of did away with masks, but at the same time, we also did away with the test-to-stay program. But one of the safety valves that we put in, in districts specifically, was to anybody who tested positive. The quarantine is now five days. The mandated quarantine is five days. And we chose and was supported by the committee to test on day six to make sure that a student or staff member was no longer positive on day six. If they test negative, they're allowed to return to school and continue on. If it's a positive test on day six, which we still do, then those students or faculty members, whomever they might be, remain in quarantine through day ten and then are able to return on day eleven without a test. So that's, that's in back and forth, been in force all along, but we've been very fortunate not having any cases. But it's, it's a nice time to remind folks that that's the situation. Masks are not required in schools. The only place they're required is in the nursing office. That is still a requirement. They are not required on buses, as we know, but it's just a nice reminder as the cases are rising. As you do go throughout the schools, we do see some students with masks on by choice. And again, of course, we're, we certainly welcome anybody who chooses to wear a mask. You know, certainly encourage that. If that's what you would like to do, it's your choice.
Okay. Questions for Mr. King? Okay, no questions. Okay, let's move on to graduation two thousand and twenty-two.
Sure. So as you just heard in the, in the student update this evening, graduation is on our traditional day, June fifth, or our day of the week, anyway, is Sunday, June fifth, two o'clock. We will be going back to our traditional graduation ceremonies that we've had to move away from over the past two years. The past two years, we've had those outside in the football field. As you'll recall, we've had circles in the grass for families and keeping them separated and six feet and all those types of things. Kind of relating back to COVID, there are no DESI updates at this time or DPH updates in terms of any type of social distancing or any, anything new at this moment. Of course, we're going to keep on top of that, but right now, we've not heard of anything. And as such, we plan on doing a traditional graduation back indoors in the gym, as we've done in the past. It allows, I think, for better viewing of the ceremony. You know, we'll have all the bleachers open. Families are obviously welcome, all those types of things. So we should be in expectation of that. Our last traditional graduation was two thousand and nineteen. So we are really working hard this year, I should say the high school's really working hard this year to have, really getting back to those traditional end-of-year events, especially for our seniors in this particular class. Has missed a number of things as sophomores and juniors, so, you know, we do have a prom planned and all sort of the traditional events. And the new event, really, that's, I think is a nice one, is what Ms. Rondo described, is that sort of outdoor event with the movies and the food trucks and so on. So really trying to make sure that this year is special for our senior class, but as well recognizing our traditions.
Okay.
So we look forward to seeing everybody there on the, on the, on June fifth. With special seating, all the, all the things you expect that we would have and have had in the past. We'll be back.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Vine?
One self-serving question here.
Yes, sir.
In recent years, or a few years ago, they started the, well, they basically had the school committee members wearing gowns at graduation. I know it's inside this year, but it tended to be a little uncomfortable outside the last time we went. And I'm just curious as to whether we're going to be wearing robes again this year or whether we're going to be able to go with a fork, coat, and tie.
Sure.
I'm all for pomp and circumstance, but...
Mr. Chair. So we welcome the school committee to come. We will have reserved seating. You are welcome to wear regalia or not. It is your choice. We do invite all of the Winchandon staff because they were all part of our students' education. Our tradition is we, we march in before the students in regalia, and then, because we're leading them now, and at the end of graduation, they lead us out because they are heading out into the world. So if you would like to march in, we do ask that you wear regalia. If you don't want to march and you just want to sit and spectate, you do not need to wear regalia. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So if we choose to wear regalia, do we have to submit? Like, I mean, do you do it on basis on like, like a bachelor's degree or a master's degree?
Yep. So many of the staff have their own regalia that they wear. I think we are beyond the point where we can order things from Justin. So if you do have your own regalia, you are welcome to wear it. And we have staff that have masters, staff that have bachelors, so they, they wear whatever regalia they have. We do have some regalia, like, on hand, but I don't have any stalls. I just have the gowns.
So moving forward, we would have to, what's the deadline? Only because this, I mean, I didn't know.
We are moving to a new company this, next year, so I, I don't know offhand, but normally we order those things about a month in advance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else on graduation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else on your report, Mr. King?
That completes the superintendent's report for this evening.
All right, that concludes it. I like it. All right, next is new business. Somebody named Nicole Landry, life changer of the year award? Hi, Nicole. Come on up. Come on up. Listen, this is, this is a biggie. And, Nicole, I'm gonna, I've known Nicole since she was a little girl. She went to high school with my son. She's just a salt-of-the-earth kind of person, always has been, right from a little girl. And this award that she has is just beyond cool, I guess, and well-deserved.
Well, thank you.
So I'm going to embarrass you and read some stuff so that the public gets to hear it. I know that you've been like on tour and everybody's been patting you on the back and all that stuff, and it's well-deserved, but I'm going to read this because it's spectacular and you deserve it. Nicole Landry was nominated by her colleague and mother, Brenda Kenny. Mrs. Landry is not only an amazing educator, but someone who positively impacts every life she touches. She truly cares for the entire child, family, while spreading love in all directions. She is married to her husband, Michael, and has a son, Parker. Mrs. Landry has put on many hats during her career in education. She has worked in every school in her district, from elementary to high school. Administrators seek her out to work with their students because of her flexibility, positivity, natural ability to reach the children, and ability to work with all students. She started off working in a school with children with autism. Then she went to a parochial school and settled in her hometown where she was raised. She has said, "It feels like family in my hometown." She loves going to community events and seeing her children. During the COVID-nineteen pandemic, she taught Chinese students how to speak English online. They both learned a lot from one another. This year, Mrs. Landry was asked to teach third grade, special education, and she happily accepted the position. Mrs. Landry has proved her ability to make a beneficial difference in the lives of many students. She has been known to help students pass graduate by providing free tutoring at her house on weekends and during the summer. Some of these struggling students are not in her class, but because of her huge heart and reputation, they seek her out. She gives her students the confidence they need to succeed. Because of the low socioeconomic district Mrs. Landry teaches in, she has secretly paid for years of school lunches, prom dresses, tuxedos, sports, and graduation expenses. Mrs. Landry believes that every child should be given the experiences her own child has. Every year, she gives a scholarship to a graduating senior who may not otherwise receive one, but has worked very hard, has shown integrity, and is deserving of having a chance to a better life. She has such a wonderful connection with all students. They come to her with personal issues, and she lovingly directs them to the people they need to get in touch with at the same time. Unfortunately, students have had to come to her so she and her husband can carry them into the funeral parlor of a high school friend of theirs that passed away. She does all of this with her husband and son's blessings for children who are less fortunate than them. Mrs. Landry has always created a positive school atmosphere. It's why many students and parents return to her long after they have graduated, usually to give her a hug and thank her for all she has done for them, both academically and socially emotionally. She's committed to producing a loving and nurturing atmosphere with all students. Walk into any school in the district or ask a parent or administrator about Mrs. Landry, and they will know who she is and what she believes in. Mrs. Landry is known to take leadership within her school district. She is a leader in professional development and data. She knows that data drives her instruction, and she's willing to share with her colleagues what she has done to improve scores and take ownership of mistakes. Mrs. Landry has willingly met with parents at the public library to help them with programs that have been implemented, but were, but necessarily well-received. After speaking with Mrs. Landry, the parents and students are on board with trying something new. She's already proven herself in the community to be a caring and loving person who has the interests of the students at heart. Therefore, students and parents are willing to listen to what she has to say. Mrs. Landry has a record of excellent performance at the professional level, and it leads to creating a collaborative team of teachers and a community of learners. She knows how to differentiate instruction and meet the needs of all students. She has always had positive two-way communication with parents and students. Mrs. Landry had a student with Down Syndrome take Flat Stanley with him on an educational vacation. She incorporated his vacation into her class. It was awesome, and all the students learned from one another. Everything Mrs. Landry does is done with high morals and ethical standards. If you walk by Mrs. Landry's room, you will see students conversing with one another and engaged in learning. When students leave her class for the day, her parting words will be, "Remember to be a kind human and make a difference today." Mrs. Landry has made unwavering efforts and is a great listener. Because of her caring attitude, her students know what they can positively change the world, one step at a time. That's pretty awesome.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm just blown away by the whole thing. I had to read the whole thing. At first, I thought I might just paraphrase it, but now I said, "No, we need to hear the whole thing, because this is pretty amazing." So tell us about your award, Nicole.
So I was very surprised that I was selected for this award because I just try to do the right thing by kids and parents and staff members every day, and someone noticed that I did that. But I think we would all do the same thing for anybody in the district, really. So this award had nine hundred or eight-hundred-and-fifty nominees, and out of those eighteen people were selected, and I was one of those eighteen.
Out of nine-hundred-and-fifty?
I think it was eight-hundred-and-fifty, something like that. Yeah.
So eight-hundred and...
Oh, was it nine-hundred-and-fifty? Yeah.
Was it nine-fifty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
She being a little modest? So eighteen were chosen across the country out of nine-hundred-and-fifty applicants. And right here from Winchandon, Massachusetts, we have one of those eighteen. I can't, I'm just so proud of you.
Well, thank you.
I think it's, it's an incredible award for you and recognition for the work that you've done. And I do agree that we have a lot of people that do those kinds of things that you do. I don't think they do it quite to the extent that you do it, or as well as you might do it, but I know that we have a strong staff that do believe in those ideals that you promote. And so I'm very proud of our staff, and our whole community thanks you for what you do on a daily basis, for our students, for our parents, for our community. And being a Murdoch graduate, it's especially sweet for us as we think about people who, who may not have the love for the town or the love for the school that you have. They're missing out because they're missing out.
It's a great place to live, you know, be a part of the community.
Okay. All right, so let's open it up. Mr. Vine?
Yeah, I just, I haven't known Nicole since she was a little girl, but I've known her since she was, I guess, probably a, maybe a sophomore, junior at Murdoch shortly after we moved to Winchandon. I would see her on occasion as she was manning the cash register at, at Rite Aid. And her personality just was one of those open personalities that made you feel comfortable asking her questions, talking to her, and after getting to know her a little bit, it was, she was talking about her, her plans for her education and what she wanted to do. And I could tell that there was something special in Nicole. I knew that she was going to do good things and, and impress a lot of people and help a lot of people. I know that, I can only speak for myself, but on those days when you might have gone into the store not feeling so great and had a chance to share a little bit with Nicole, you always felt a little better walking out. She just has that personality. And I will say that I was really, the only time that I was disappointed in Nicole is when she left us to go to a neighboring school district. But luckily, that was only for a year. And I was so glad to see that, that she returned. And thank you for coming back to Winchandon, and thanks for all you do for the, for the district, for the kids, and for the community. It really is appreciated. And... It really is appreciated, and, um, not everybody in town may know what you do, but hopefully after tonight, um, a lot more people will, will recognize your contribution to this town.
Well, thank you.
Got somebody calling to congratulate you, I'm sure. I'm sure that's what it is.
Sorry about that. Somebody was trying to call us.
Well, thank you very much.
Might have been right, I don't know. He didn't say he was gonna call in, but.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, you may, Mr. King.
I started in this district July first, two thousand and eighteen, as you're well aware, as the principal of the high school. And, um, it also may not surprise you that one of the first people I met was some of the coaches wanting to talk to me about students who might not be eligible to play fall sports. And reviewing those items, I had to go through and figure out, you know, how we could sort of manage that, and going through and trying to see how we could help those students. And so in doing so, I started asking around who, who could help particular students. And we had one particular student that, that really needed to catch up and was an integral part of, of the team, but also really needed to be an integral part of that team to continue to be successful in his study. So I started asking around who, who could help this student. At the time, uh, Ms. Landry was a middle school teacher, and I wasn't in the middle school, I was in the high school. And I was told, "You need to get in touch with Nicole Landry. She'll help this student." She has a personal relationship with him, and so to your point, that yes, we all do this work, but not everybody does it to the same level. Um, and to echo something that you read, this was the middle of summer, and we didn't know each other. I think you might have, you were probably in your classroom, and I just showed up as the new stranger and said, "I need help." We've got somebody that I think you know very well, and I, I really need to help him. I don't know him, but I'm told you do, and that you will help. And without any hesitation, Ms. Landry said, "Absolutely," you know, "Who is it?" and so on. And of course, she knew the student very well, volunteered, and again, volunteered in her summer to help this young man with, I believe it was math. I'm almost positive it was math.
Yeah, it was math.
And, and to, and, and took him in, as was mentioned, I, because I have, I have, I have on my phone still photographic evidence of him sitting at her kitchen table with, next to her son, who was much younger, especially at the time, um, probably elementary, sitting there doing his math work with his orange juice and, and whatever she had also prepared for his breakfast or lunch or whatever it was every single day, so that he could get caught up and be eligible. And I gotta say, I knew I was in the right place, you know. I, I came from a place where we always worked for individual students, and it was about those relationships, and those are the things I believe in. And you were one of the first interactions I had in this district, and, and I knew then that I was in the right spot. And, and so I would, you know, I'm here to just echo all of those sentiments, but to thank you for all that you do, and, and, and thank you for reaffirming to me that I made good choices in, in, in coming here. And so thank you so much for what you do. I really appreciate it, and you're more than deserving of this, of this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would entertain a motion
Mr. Chair.
For, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Karen.
Just if I may.
Yeah, you sure, she can.
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, um, I came here during a pandemic. And, um, unfortunately, my, my child was literally locked out of the school because the school closed two days after, um, we signed him up. But I actually heard about you quite a bit, even before, as, I, I was elected, even before my child stepped foot in the school. And I heard about you from quite a few parents and quite a few students. So your reputation persuaded you even before my child stepped foot in a school in the district. So all I heard was good things. So when I found out that you were nominated and, and had received this award, it was no surprise to me that you were the one in the district that was selected. I have known one other person that has ever received this award, and they were somebody that I admired very much. So, um, you follow in the footsteps of greatness of somebody that I, I love very much. So, um, I, I know that you've done great things. I know that you will only go on to do greater things. And, um, I only expect to hear even more of your praises, um, going forward. So thank you for all that you do for the students of Winchandon, and for the parents, and just for the community as a whole. And please just keep inspiring, because I think that's what you do most of all.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I just?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, Alicia.
Oh, yeah, I just want to, um, extend my gratitude and congratulations to you. I mean, it's very clear from what everyone has said that, um, you absolutely embody the best of what teachers should be, and we hope teachers can be for not only our students, but just for the, the people in the community. So, um, thank you for your selflessness in your service, and, um, it's clear that you got into teaching for all of the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Greg?
If I could, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we, um, take a brief recess for, some, some picture-taking, and, uh, and then come back and say five minutes.
So do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay. No discussion. Greg?
Aye.
Karen? Alicia?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. We will take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to blame the call if we're a little lengthy. All right, so superintendent evaluation discussion. Okay, I did speak with Tracy Novick at the MASC and asked her for a little bit of guidance because Mr. King didn't start off as our superintendent, he was assistant superintendent. And so I asked her about doing an evaluation and she recommended that we not do an evaluation, that we do an observation, like a mid-year observation that we normally do. And there is a form for that. So, and so what would happen is, is I would give you all the forms, the form they use, and then you would fill it out and get it back to the chair. And then the chair would be, it's the chair's job to kind of pull the five together and write something. And in this case, it's not a summative, it's a formative. So it's just basically feedback for Mr. King. It's not an evaluation, it's feedback. And then next year, when he gets a full year under his belt, we'll do a mid-year and then an evaluation, a summative at the end of the year. Okay? Does that make sense?
It does.
I have no problem with that.
And Karen, you good?
It is what it is. I mean, I personally believe that since he was acting, he's been acting as our interim superintendent for over a year and then took on the role as superintendent that we should be able to do an evaluation. I understand that you spoke with Tracy, I understand what you're saying, I'm fine with doing it this way, but I'm just making the point that he technically has been acting in this capacity for a year.
Well, and that, I understand where you're coming from too, but I kind of like the plan.
But I have no problem with doing it this way, is what I'm saying.
I like the plan. So we'll do that. I will get you a copy of the form, I'll get all of you a copy of the form.
And you're saying, I'm sorry.
And so we would like to get this done before the end of the school year. So, to provide Mr. King some feedback. So, what's the count, let me look at a calendar.
So when you're saying an observation?
Yeah, it's more, it's called a, it's called a formative assessment. So it's basically just, it's feedback, and you'll see on the form.
Okay, so it's just based on what we see from him here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So there's no, it's not, you know, it's not evaluative, it's not saying you did a good job, you didn't do a good job, it's just basically...
No, no, I'm just thinking of, you know, we've heard things from, let's say, you know, if, because we don't just see him in the setting necessarily. You know, like we may see him at, you know, not just plays, as much as I still haven't gotten you in that plant.
Correct.
Yes, I'm still very upset by that.
I understand.
But, but, you know, where we may see him, you know, in the district, or we may see, we may, you know, hear from teachers, or we may hear from parents, or, you know, I mean, are we supposed to count those?
The form is pretty self-explanatory, it'll have categories.
I guess I'd have to see it, if I got questions, I can ask them at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
So I would request strongly that you have your, yours completed, and Alicia, you probably sit this one out. But...
It's fine, yep, I understand.
But I'll send you the form anyway, just so that you can become familiar with it.
Sure.
And so I would respectfully ask that they be completed by Thursday, June 9th, and then whoever the chair is, because it might not be me, whoever the chair is then has at least a week to go through them and put a summary together that we can have for the meeting of the 16th. Okay?
Do we have a meeting after that?
I don't think so.
In June, no.
Not before the end of the school year, we have June, what would be, June 2nd and June 16th.
Is it June 2nd or June 3rd?
Uh, the 3rd is a Friday, I believe, so it's the second.
June 2nd, I have the calendar in front of me. June 2nd is...
June 2nd and June 16th are...
Okay, sorry, the 31st is messing me up.
All right, so if you could have that, those completed by June 9th and get them to the chair, whoever that may be, and then by the 16th, the chair should have those summarized and we can chat about those. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, so that takes care of that. Old business we have done, future agenda items. Alicia, this is an opportunity for anyone on the committee here to request certain items that they might want to have discussed at future meetings. All right, so we just list them out. So data presentations, Murdoch trust breakdown, ESR update, those are all things that...
And we're adding the reorg to the next meeting.
Yeah, and we're adding reorganization. Okay? Anything else?
No, at this point.
Okay. So, we come to one of the things that we usually end on, it's a little earlier tonight, but the school committee closing comments, if anybody wants to bake those, because then we're gonna, somebody's gonna make a motion to go into executive session. So, we could hold off on those until...
Yeah, I was gonna say, because we have to come back into open session anyway, so...
So we'll come back, we'll save that one for when we come back to open session. All right, so, somebody want to make the motion?
Minister Chair. A move that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to reconvene into open session therefrom.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Karen seconds it. All right, Alicia?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries, we are in executive session. We are in executive session. I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session I'd like to call this meeting of the Winchandon School Committee back into session after coming out of executive session at 7:17.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I don't think we need any other formalities before proceeding here. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement between the Winchandon School Committee and the Winchandon Teachers Association.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the negotiated settlement, agreement with the teachers. WTA on the floor. And we have any discussion? Anybody? No discussion. Okay, Alicia?
Yay.
Karen?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we have an agreement. All right. The last thing on our agenda for tonight is school committee comments. Why don't we have Alicia go last, so she can hear the rest of the crowd first?
Thank you.
Actually, I'll be last, but you'll be next to last.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
So, go ahead, Greg.
Not too much. I just wanted to thank Ms. Rondo and her negotiating team. We had a really nice, uh, several sessions negotiating this contract, and it was amicable. And whenever there was a disagreement, it was handled in an adult and professional manner. And we seemed to, uh, in those rare cases where there was much of a disagreement, seemed to solve the problem relatively quickly. And I think everybody on both sides wanted to get it done and do what was best. Not just for the teachers, but for the district and the community as a whole. So, thanks to them and to Stephanie and her team for that. I guess I'm just gonna leave it there for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Karen?
I wanted to thank both Larry and Greg for negotiating with Ms. Rondo and her team for to get this done, so that we have a nice contract with the teachers association for the next couple of years. And, well, three years, and so that we can move forward and hopefully get out of all the pandemic fun that we've had to endure. I'd also like to again congratulate Mrs. Landry on her award. And I'd like to once again say congratulations to Alicia for her win and to welcome her to the school committee. And just remind everybody that we have another meeting in two weeks, and we will be here having fun again. Don't roll your eyes, Dad.
So, you get the drift?
Yeah, I do.
Sure, you're up.
I mean, uh, definitely a whirlwind this evening, but thank you for everyone's patience and extra explanation. And I definitely was not a part of the negotiation for a contract, but I'm always happy when both sides can come to an agreement, because I've definitely been in a position where I've had to work without one. And so, that, I definitely send my gratitude to both sides. And also, thank you, Karen, for the well wishes and everyone else. I'm looking forward to working with everyone. And that is all for me this evening.
Okay. And for me, I just want to thank everybody on the school committee tonight for a job well done. Certainly Nicole's was, uh, Landry's award was a highlight for us. It just goes to show that we have really good people in our district, including Ms. Rondo. I want to thank her for all she does. Every time we have some kind of an event, it's got Ms. Rondo's fingerprints all over it. So, uh, she does a great job, and we're looking forward to senior week and graduation and all that fun stuff. I know it'll be great.
A Rondo production.
A Rondo production, yeah. So, I want to thank Ms. Rondo for that. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alicia?
Yes.
Karen?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we are adjourned at 7:22.